Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is February 3rd, 2006, and as usual, we are meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, as we do on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. These meetings are open to the public in room 370, the John Ferraro Council Chambers, here in City Hall at 200 North Spring Street. And we are being broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel. And also, we are being webcast on our city's homepage, which is www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information, of all sorts of services, and information about your elected officials. We're also being simulcast on the city phone, sorry, council phone, which is a number that members of the public can dial in to listen to our council committee meetings, as well as our city council meetings. We will begin this Friday, as we customarily do, with some presentations by council members. And the first of those, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wendy Grul, President Protem from the 2nd District.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to actually ask my guests here, who are all wearing red, to come up and stand behind me this morning. I know Councilwoman Hahn, who is participating in a press conference, would be here with me, as well as Ms. Perry, who's not in council this morning, to kind of highlight some of the issues, and this is the Wear Red for Women Day from the American Heart Association. What we're trying to do is talk about our hearts, and it's very appropriate, as we get close to Valentine's Day, to talk about our hearts, but on a serious note, and there is Ms. Hahn in her beautiful red. I was just saying, I knew you would be here momentarily. I want to ask some people, as they're listening today, did you know that heart disease is the leading cause of death, and stroke is the third-leading cause of death in the United States? Did you know that cardiovascular diseases claim the lives of over 480,000 American women every year? That's about one death per minute. Each year, 53% of the women who die in the United States are those who have succumbed to cardiovascular disease. Compare that to 46% of men who die every year in this country, and about 35,000 more females die from a stroke than males. I know, when you kind of talk about it, people think that the male population is the one that has more of the heart attacks and strokes, and the women are catching up. Now, it's estimated that direct and indirect costs of cardiovascular diseases and stroke in the U.S. is $403.1 billion annually. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a health crisis on our hands, and it is one that we can take control of and help prevent, and really be responsible about preventing this type of disease. Go Red for Women is the American Heart Association's national call to increase awareness of heart disease, the leading cause of death for women, and to inspire women to take charge of their lives and their heart health. In recognition of this important activity in the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, we are declaring Friday, February 3rd, 2006, to Wear Red for Women Day in the city of Los Angeles, and urge all citizens to show their support for women and their fight against heart disease by commemorating the day by wearing the color red, which you see Ms. Hahn and I, and not only our ladies, but gentlemen, wearing red ties today. We believe that by increasing awareness and empowering women, we can reduce their risk for cardiovascular disease. We hope that every woman who's listening today, may be in the city council, will go to the rotunda, where we are giving, actually, representatives from Kaiser Permanente are providing free health screenings to assess blood pressure and under other indicators that identify risk. And so I'd like to ask my colleague, who looks beautiful in red, Janice Hahn, to also say a few words.
We should have had some music. Cue up Lady in Red. We have that audio, right? Thank you, Councilwoman Grul, for bringing this to the attention of, really, not only Los Angeles, but beyond. We're really coming together today to try to wipe out heart disease. And millions of Americans across the nation are all wearing red today, so that we can begin to really raise the awareness of this very important issue. This year's goal is to raise $20 million through the Go Red for Women, collecting $5 from each employee that participates in Wear Red Day. And it was already said, but it can't be said enough, heart disease is the number-one killer of women, but it can be prevented. 64% of women who died suddenly of coronary heart disease had no previous symptoms. An American dies from cardiovascular disease every 34 seconds. And African-American and Mexican-American women have higher heart disease and stroke risk factors than white women of comparable socioeconomic status. The money today will be, will go towards research, education, and community programs, and raising awareness of heart disease in women. And I would say that because we're all wearing red, and because we're talking about heart disease, this is an important day, and I believe we've already made Wear Red for Women Day a success. Thank you to all who are participating. Let's make next year an even bigger day.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and I'd like to introduce some of the people, actually, I'll ask Vernon Kozlin, who's the LA County Board Chairman, introduce some of the people that are here with us today. But I think, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we are just around the corner from Valentine's Day. Let's ask all women, and to make sure that you, whether it's your partner, your friend, your mom, your sister, to tell them on Valentine's Day that it is important to get checked, to have their blood pressure taken. And with that, I'd like to introduce Vernon Kozlin, who is the LA County Board Chairman of the American Heart Association, and is from City National Bank. He is the Executive Vice President.
Just before that, if I may, Ms. Grul, Mr. Rosendahl would like to add a few words.
Yeah, I'm...
My seconds, though, here does it, as we're being...
I stand because the American Heart Association and I have a long-term relationship. I want to thank Dr. John Harrell there, from Cedars, who's a great friend and leader on this issue. And you know, we did a lot of shows, those of you who have watched me over the years, on women and heart disease. And they always think it's men, and, number one, and then, number two, when a woman goes into the emergency room, the diagnostic techniques used on a man don't make sense. So, over the last 10 years, there's been an incredible amount from the medical profession that are able to diagnose with the symptoms that women have that are different than the symptoms that men have. So I just applaud my two colleagues for putting the sunshine on it today. I have a little red, it's with the chickens in my tie, I wanted to wear that one today. Plus, of course, I got the pin on there. But God bless you for bringing it out, and let's see, as the future goes, that more resources are put toward women and heart disease with the same kind of urgency that was done with men. Thank you.
Councilmen, thank you. Councilwomen, thank you as well. I want to thank the entire council for the support in the American Heart Association's campaign for Go Red for Women. Importantly, in this initiative is education, to make sure people are aware, get checked, and take care of themselves. The American Heart Association in Los Angeles is committed to improving heart disease conditions and to reduce heart disease by over 10% this decade. We are very much appreciative of the support the city has given us, and want to thank all of you for your commitment. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Labans would like to add a couple words real quick. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we just want to introduce real quick some of the other people that are present.
Dr. Harrell, our board member, Hillel Cohen, a board member, and I'll introduce the rest of the staff from the Heart Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labans?
Mr. President, Councilmembers Grul and Hahn, and the American Heart Association, thank you very much. It's so important, and the only thing I should say to all is walk, walk, walk. If each of us walk, walk, walk a little, it makes a difference. And I had a spirited walk this morning, and it was enjoyable, and I encourage all, my wife walks, and it's just important to walk, walk, walk. So hail to the American Heart Association for all you do, and let's walk, walk, walk for the women, because without the women, we wouldn't be around. God bless all women.
That is so true.
Thank you, Mr. Labans.
I know, and I just want to, Claudia Keller is the Executive Director of the American Heart Association, to acknowledge her and all of her efforts in making sure that the Go Red for Women Day is not only here, but as far as we can get people to listen. On a personal note, many of you know that my brother-in-law passed away at the age of 44 with a heart attack. And my, we convinced my husband to make sure that he went and checked out after that, what had occurred, and found, as we all do, that it is important to go and see your doctor. And so, from my own personal experience, I know that it is critically important that you go and get those kinds of checkups that could save your life. So, thank you so very much to my colleagues, thank you to Ms. Hahn, and thank you to everyone from the American Heart Association, who dedicates their lives to saving others. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts in publicizing this effort, and thank you to everybody who is here. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for presentation, to be followed by Mr. Smith.
Members of the council, I can start now. Gonghei Fatchoi, Sunyi Failok, Happy Chinese New Year. This is the Year of the Dog. The dog is the 11th animal among the 12 zodiac animals in a Chinese horoscope. According to legends and ancient times, Buddha asked all the animals to meet him on Chinese New Year. Twelve animals came, and Buddha named the year after each one of them. He told that the people born in each animal's year would have some of the animal's personality. The dog is associated with benevolence and good fortune. People born in the Year of the Dog have a deep sense of loyalty, are honest, and make good leaders. So you should check out what year you're in. Members, as you know, each year we celebrate the Chinese New Year with residents from throughout the city. Part of that tradition here in Los Angeles includes welcoming the new Miss Chinatown and her court to our council chambers. So please join me in doing just that, as we welcome the 2006 Miss Chinatown and her court in City Hall. Let's give a round of applause. Sponsored by the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, each year, the Miss Chinatown Contest draws some of the brightest women from throughout the region to see who will have the honor of representing Chinatown at numerous formal and sometimes informal events. Behind me today, we have women who now have big dreams, but are well on their way to achieving them. They're each all academically focused, each has shown a commitment to community, as well as a commitment to promoting the Chinese culture. And I must say, one, I actually went to Castalar, primary school here in Chinatown. And one of the moms went to Chinatown's Castalar, too. Naturally, we will be introducing the Queen and her court in a moment, but before we do that, I wanted to give a representative of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce the opportunity to speak, and perhaps say a few words about the organization and about the pageant. Sir, we have Kenny...
Thank you, Councilman Reyes, and thank you all, our Los Angeles City Council, for inviting us here and allowing us to be here today. On behalf of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce and organization, who for 50 years have been in Los Angeles, encouraging, advocating, and helping Chinese-American business throughout the Southland, we'd like to encourage you all and other Angelenos to come out this weekend to celebrate Chinese New Year and the Lunar New Year with us in Chinatown. On Saturday, we will have a parade, the Golden Dragon Parade, which will be in Chinatown, beginning at 2:00, as well as a festival taking place both days, Saturday and Sunday. I thank you all for having us here, and please come out and enjoy the festivities with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Kenny, for your hard work. It's an example of how the private sector steps up and shows pride in their community. What I'd like to do is present the search to the court, and then I'll be presenting the search to the Queen and ask her to share a few words. With us is Third Princess Angela Chell Robertson. Angela, congratulations. We have with us Kay Panasami?
Yes.
Wanted to add a little something? Go ahead.
Okay, let me just finish the search, and we'll...
Yeah, we'll finish the search, excuse me.
We have with us Ms. Nancy Kwong, First Princess. And with us, the Queen, Ms. Ally Chinatown Court, Malali Chai-Chen.
Malali? Please, go share a few words with us.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Reyes, President Garcetti, and everyone here for their time and consideration for us. We are extremely grateful to be here. We'd like to wish everyone a happy Chinese New Year. We hope we can see you all at the parade. And I know Councilmember Labans talked about walking, and we have a firecracker run on February 12th, so if you want to come out for that, too. And we also have a golf tournament in March, so we hope to see you, everyone, at our events, and happy Chinese New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer? I can recognize Mr. Weezer to say a couple words as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's always a pleasure to be here and celebrate the diversity of this city, and here, in a very special time, that I know as a child at Euclid Avenue Elementary School in Boca Heights, my teachers, we would always do special things during this time to celebrate the Chinese New Year. But I'm excited now that I have a four-year-old daughter, that all she's talked to me for the past two weeks was the Chinese New Year. And this morning, I left my house, and I told her to get ready for tomorrow. She has bought her Chinese dress, and we also would join Councilmember Reyes in the parade, and she's really, really excited about doing that. So thank you for being here, thank you for keeping your culture alive and well in Los Angeles, and we all celebrate this Chinese New Year with you, as will my daughter tomorrow at the parade. Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for continuing this celebration here at the council. Thank you.
And Mr. Labans, as well, would like to add a couple words.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Reyes, thank you, Gonghei Fatchoi. I think what's wonderful about this tradition, over 100 years in Los Angeles, it is a great parade, and everyone could find their way to Chinatown by the red line or the gold line, or somehow, because it's going to be a beautiful day tomorrow. But also, what's most important, not just the future kings and queens of Los Angeles who are right next to you, but those young women behind you all represent great universities, whether it's Cal State Fullerton, or Irvine, or UCLA, or, I hope I didn't miss one there, I know, say it again, USC? Thank you very much, how could I miss that, Greg Smith? But all of them, and that's a credit to you and the push, so I congratulate all of you for being involved. It's a great parade, it's going to be a great day, I look forward to being there tomorrow. Gonghei Fatchoi.
Thank you, Tom. We also have with us, one of my favorite parts is the Little Court, big in heart. The Little King Douglas Seto Chin Jr., Douglas. We can prop him up here, and here's Douglas. I think I'll throw him on my back if I keep this up. We have Little Queen Serleth Aningdun, are you, here she is, and yes, we will lift her up, too. We have with us Little Prince Ken Faimar. Ken, where are you, sir? And he'll go bright early this morning. Here we go. We have Little Princess Kyla Dang. Kyla, where are you? Here she is. This pony's just ready to jump. Yeah. There she is. And we have Little Princess Kailene Lee. And where are you? There you are. And we'll lift her up, too. There she is. Last but not least, I want to thank my council deputy, Mike Fong, who's been one of the unsung heroes, very dedicated, working hard for the Northeast area, including Chinatown. And thank you, councilmembers, for your patience. I went a little bit over the six minutes, but thank you so much, and we'll be providing the search to the Little Court in the back. Have a great year, Gonghei Fatchoi, Sunyi Failok.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and we look forward to seeing you all at the parade. Thank you to the court, to Kenny, for your leadership there. Next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember from the 12th District, Councilmember Greg Smith, for a presentation.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I want to take an opportunity to recognize one of the extraordinary businesses here in Los Angeles who has won a special award. Downtown Diversion, Inc. is a East Los Angeles-based recycler of construction and demolition material founded by Mike Hammer and Mayan Spaccarelli, who are with me here today. They were named this year as the top construction demolition recycling facility in America by the Construction Materials Recycling Association. They process over 200,000 tons of construction and demolition material in 2005 as partners with the city of Los Angeles that otherwise would have ended up in landfills. More than 75% of the materials they pick up from construction and demolition sites is diverted from landfills. Steel and cardboard is reusable, wood gets chipped and mulched to use in nurseries, and biomass fuel to brew electricity. Concrete and asphalt is crushed and used as soil additive. Downtown Diversion operates inside a closed facility, and it's a state-of-the-art facility that prevents pollution of air. As you drive by the facility, you wouldn't even know it was there. As you know, I've been proposing in my Renew L.A. to increase recycling. One of the easiest recyclings we can do is our construction demolition materials. And so I wanted to recognize them for the extraordinary work they have done as partners with the city of Los Angeles in getting that construction demolition material out of landfills, so we can decrease our reliance on landfills, reduce the use of landfills in the city of Los Angeles, as we move toward what I hope will be a policy that this council will pass in the next few weeks, and that will be, we will be a land-free city in the next two decades in Los Angeles. And so I want to present to you Mike Hammer and Mayan Spaccarelli, Diversion, Downtown Diversion, Inc., for their extraordinary work in helping us reach those goals, and for being recognized as the top construction demolition recycling firm in America. Thank you very much, Mike.
Well, thank you, Councilman Smith. We're very honored for the award and the recognition, and Downtown Diversion and Looney Bins are committed to being partners with the city and achieving the diversion goal of 70% by the year 2020, and to build an economy that's built on sustainable resources and eliminating the need for local landfills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything? No? Thank you very much. Just come back and take a picture. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcetti? Thank you very much, Mr. President, and want to thank Mr. Weezer for the recognition, and invite everybody here today to recognize a great group that is based in the 13th District, but that really serves not only the city of Los Angeles, but the entire Southland area. And Rick Kiefer is here, as well as many of his compatriots from the plumbing, heating, cooling contractors of greater Los Angeles area, who are celebrating 100 years here in Los Angeles as an organization. When you think about 100 years ago, I think that's when Sunset Boulevard connected with Hollywood. It was probably one of the, at the time, the western edge of town really was Western Avenue. The population of this metropolis was much, much smaller. And throughout that incredible century of growth, the plumbing, heating, and cooling contractors of the greater Los Angeles area have been with us, improving the quality of life. We love our climate, but occasionally that climate gets a little extreme, and these great contractors are the folks that make sure that we are as cool, as comfortable, as well looked after and taken care of as we possibly can be. So located in the 13th District, the Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors of Greater Los Angeles was founded as the Merchant Plumbers of Los Angeles on January 22nd, 1906. And PHCC has been a really important part of the growth and development of this metropolis here in Los Angeles by donating time and materials to support community improvement projects, as well as the normal work they do to improve our lives. PHCC provides training for young men and women, and they've graduated literally thousands of apprentice plumbers who have dedicated their careers to the health and comfort of Angelenos. And, you know, we look at the young people in Los Angeles today, and we see that there are good-paying jobs, such as becoming a plumber, and quite often, we don't have the connections that take young people into those professions. But PHCC is doing that, and making sure that that connection is made for young people, so that they can have good-paying jobs if they grow up here in Los Angeles. They live up to their motto, "The plumber protects the health of the nation," through professional interaction with code-writing organizations, continuous contractor skills training, and by sponsoring annual conventions and conferences. So I want to give congratulations to the plumbing, heating, cooling contractors of the greater Los Angeles area on this, the 100th anniversary, and thank them for their incredible service to the city of Los Angeles. So I'll give this to Rick on behalf of the entire city council. Congratulations, and here's to another 100 years. Not the individual, but give him a round of applause.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the council members, the council president, for recognizing the contribution of the plumbing, heating, cooling contractors of the greater Los Angeles area. 100 years in business, serving contractors with one thing in mind, training, professionalism, bringing the customers, the people of the greater city of Los Angeles, the services that they demand. So in this climate, let's take advantage of the educational opportunities offered through our schools. I understand that many of us, we always are pushing our kids off to college, and we're not against that, but many, many children have a, they need to understand that there's good, good opportunity in the plumbing, heating, cooling fields. So we teach that at our center in the 13th Councilmatic District. So again, I say thank you, and thank you for having us, and have a great day.
Does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Appreciate it, and I guess we'll carry on with the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also would like to mention that at our school district at LAUSD, although beginning of the year 2008, every student would be placed in a college preparatory curriculum, it's all, parents, if the children, if the students sit down with a parent or a counselor, they could opt out of that curriculum and choose another technical field, such as plumbing. And the district is now embarking upon a curriculum, preparing students for a better, for a technological or vocational training, and that's something that hasn't happened in the past. Congratulations again. Now, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Padilla for a introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I was warmly surprised this morning, and I do want to introduce a group of students from Mary Immaculate Parish School. All right, kids, we talked about this time to stand up, wave for the camera, that are visiting today from my district in Pacoima. And they surprised me this morning with a little bit of an honor here, award of appreciation they presented to me for some of the community projects that we've been doing in and around the school in the same neighborhoods that most of the students live in. But they're visiting here as part of what I understand is to be Catholic Schools Week, and they're touring City Hall. We had a nice brief conversation upstairs before council, and they'll be sitting in on the council meeting for a few minutes to see how city government runs. So to all the students and the teachers and the parents here, I want to welcome you to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Cardinals Gruel, Han, Weeza, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, West, and Zine Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weeza moves, Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote, that is approved. And commendatory resolutions, Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Weiss seconds, unanimous vote. If there's no objection, so approved. Next order.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, we'd like to take a public comment now on items that are not formally agendized, but are nevertheless under the purview of the City Council. I'd like to invite Raymond Yu to come forward first, to be followed by Frida Marlin and Spike Marlin. Raymond Yu here? Raymond Yu? Okay, it's your turn to speak, Mr. Yu, to be followed by Frida Marlin and then Spike Marlin. Just hold tight.
Okay. I'm ready to speak right now. Good morning, this is Raymond Yu. I'm going to let you know that this will be the final announcement for the Golden Dragon Parade and Fat Cracker 10K1 for the Chinatown event. First, it was the Chinese New Year of the Dog's celebration successful in Chinatown last week on Sunday. But tomorrow is this year's 107th Annual Los Angeles Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown, Los Angeles. When they do the Golden Dragon Parade, I think the LEDOT engineers are always modifying traffic signal lights to flashing red and yellow lights while doing the Golden Dragon Parade. But I can't tell them to keep the lights on during the parade. So tomorrow, I am unable to, sorry, tomorrow, I will be unable to attend this year's Golden Dragon Parade because the posts, current old-school classic posts, have not been removed yet. So they will start the construction by removing those current posts and replace the new ones, beginning in March after the 15 days of Chinese New Year Parade. When they do flashing red lights at Golden Dragon Parade, I will not come to the Golden Dragon Parade tomorrow, this year's parade. I will be coming, and I will be invited to come next year's Golden Dragon Parade, 2007 Year of the Pig Means Boar, after the Year of the Dog. So I'm still waiting for the construction to be started at all North Broadway intersection construction project for North Broadway's Chinatown Street Skate Phase 2 intersection-like construction project. And I can't wait for the North Hill Street lights to be replaced soon. And I'm still waiting. This spring, they will do the groundbreaking and demolition for the old-school classic Little Joe's to be replaced, the brand-new shopping malls. And plus, the intersections should be upgraded at North Broadway and College Street during the new building. So I'll be returning next year's parade. Thank you, and you have a safe Chinese New Year of the Dog.
Thank you very much. After Frida Marlin? After Frida Marlin, Spike Marlin.
I'm Frida Marlin. I'm handicapped, my son's handicapped, and a lot of people are, we have seniors here that cannot go anyplace, can't find any affordable housing. We're living in a place, I here 24 years. It's been a community of love. It's beautiful, it's well-built. And please stop and listen to me. It's, we've been doing this for 18 years, and we've been here. And we still have a beautiful home to live in, and it's affordable. It's not for corporate companies, it's for affordable housing. That's what we need. There's no place to go, even. Please help us keep our homes. We need help.
Thank you very much. Spike Marlin?
That was my dear, sweet mother. I concur with what she said. But what I wish to hammer on is that we need to get outside council. I know that's been an issue of late. Other cities are beating Aimco at this same game. We're not. Why? Because the city attorney is not taking an active role. He's not willing to go up against them. But he's in conflict. He's accepted money from the people that he's supposed to be representing us against. I don't know if it's influencing his opinion, but it sure looks not so good. We need to get outside council. I can't say it often or loud enough. If we get somebody to fight for us, we can win. If we don't, then we're all just rolling over. We got nowhere to go. So if you end up in a refrigerator box on or near your lawn, you'll know why. And Lincoln Place is a good, it's a good place to live, and it's a shame if you let these Aimco people walk all over us and you. Thank you.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green. After Mr. Green, Juan Cortez.
Good morning, everybody. How are you today, everybody? You wonder, how are you, Tom? My councilman, Tom Labange. Listen, we're living in the West, right? We're not living in New York anymore, right? So this is the West, and I'm dressed today like a Western person, and I speak a little bit of Spanish. And I had a really big week hanging out with Mayor Villagosa. Hable español, buenos dias a mis amigos latinos. I'm here to tell you that the, New York, Los Angeles Times this morning has a great story about the old Packer dealership, which is now mixed-use housing over on Olympic and Hope. It's a great story, and kudos to Jan Perry for, for working on that project with Mr. Amrani. And kudos to the 7th and the 14th districts. I am very interested in the 7th and the 14th districts for many reasons. The Jewish community started in Boyle Heights in Los Angeles, and 7th and Soto is where I spent some great time last summer. I'm coming back to Boyle Heights. And the 14th district, where Alex Padilla is, is the future of this city. And you want affordable housing, folks? There's lots of affordable housing in the 7th district and the 14th district. And we talk about the eminent domain issue. Eminent domain's tough. We have to provide for these young kids also. And these young ladies and gentlemen are our future. And congratulations to Mr. Weiss. I read in this morning's LA Times that you may be a candidate for city attorney. And much as I like Bob Hertzberg, I think you're the man for the job. All right? I'm pretty much out of material. I'll be at the Chinese Parade tomorrow. And I love all of you. And let me tell you one more time, I love the mayor. I love the mayor. And one more thing before I go, before I go. I was very offended by the email from the Republican Party about Mayor Villagosa. I was very offended, and I have called the top people. I think Linda Boyd owes the mayor an apology. And if they want any more money from me, they better clean up their act, or else I'll become a Democrat again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Juan Cortez is, Juan Cortez is coming down. After Mr. Cortez is Alberto Tlatoa.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias. Soy señor Juan Cortez. Vengo a hablar sobre el jardín de la 41 y Alameda. Allí llevamos a otros hijos que trabajen, y de ahí salen para comer, y no estamos de acuerdo que lo vayan a cerrar.
Good morning, my name is Juan Cortez. I'm here to speak about the garden on Alameda and 41st Street. I want to let you know that we are working that land. And we take our children there, and we get food from that place. And we are against it being closed.
Mi nombre es Valentin Diaz. Y estoy aquí representando a los campesinos de South Central, 41 y Alameda. Señores concejales, señor presidente.
Good morning, my name is Valentin Diaz. I'm here representing the farmers located in South Central on 41st and Alameda. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President.
Estamos siempre en la lucha, pidiéndoles. Ustedes tienen el poder. Ustedes tienen, ustedes lo pueden hacer. Hagan algo por nosotros.
We're always in the struggle, asking you guys to help us. You have the power to be able to help us. Please do something for us in reference to this situation.
No dejen que nos destruyan, lo poco que hemos logrado.
Don't let them destroy the little bit that we've been able to accomplish.
Y también quiero agregar otra cosa también, que nos está obstruyendo a nuestros compañeros, que es la Jefferson y Figueroa, una construcción que está ahí.
I also want to add something else, something that is showing my coworkers and my, my partners. There's a construction that's taking place on Figueroa, in that area.
Hay mucho congestionamiento de tráfico. Yo soy un cliente de USC. Cuando se parqueaba uno de los parqueaderos, llega la grúa y se lo llevan.
There's a lot of traffic congestion in that area. I'm a client at USC, and when we go and park around that area, the tow truck takes, towed your car.
Nosotros los campesinos de South Central, 41 y Alameda, que nos representa Farmer's Market.
As the, the farmers in South Central, being represented by Farmer's Park Market, the farmers from Alameda and 41st.
No estamos de acuerdo a esas construcciones. Nos oponemos rotundamente.
We don't agree with that kind of development and construction. We're completely against it.
Thank you, muchísimas gracias, gracias. This was Alberto Tlatoa?
No, it's Valentin.
Okay.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Alberto Tlatoa. It's been about two years and a half since the South Central farmers have been attending City Council. And yet, this body has not addressed the issues that are affecting our community. There's still a lack of green space, a lack of safety, a lack of family space, a lack of nutritious food. I just want to know when this body is going to step up and solve the necessities of our community. As representatives of Los Angeles, it's your duty to represent our community. The South Central farmer, the South Central farmer can no longer wait. This issue needs to be addressed immediately. We are under a very critical situation now, and we're asking you once again to reconsider the issue because you do have the power to give the developer an alternative to the site. Y aquí estamos, y no nos vamos.
Elisa Avina? Elisa Avina? Usteds? Sí. Usted va a hablar? No, okay. Tampoco Maria Avina? Okay. Esther Lofton? Gracias. After Esther Lofton, Donald Gaggen.
Good morning, my name is Esther Lofton, and I reside in the 10th district. My husband, Leonie Lofton Jr., an honorably discharged, disabled combat infantry veteran of a foreign war, spent his adult civil life opposing institutions of government, which he sacrificed much for in order to protect his wife, his children, and himself from unwarranted abuse and neglect. He passed two and a half years ago, leaving his integrity intact in a three-page document titled Joint Pre-Trial Statement that was signed January 23, 1967 by Deputy Los Angeles County Counsel Ron Appison, admitting guilt on the part of the defendants to each and every allegation made by Leonie Lofton and Esther M. Lofton in case number 895188, Leonie Lofton Jr. et al. versus School Board of the Los Angeles Unified School District. I have appeared before this body often enough and been in written communication with my councilmen sufficient enough to accept the fact that 20% of this body continues this 37 years of already endured abuse and does not intend to protect my right to the property I have earned under case number 895188. I therefore appeal to this body, 80% of them, whom I know respect the Constitution and laws for your service.
Thank you. Can you, did you finish up your, your sentence and your thought on that?
I just have two more sentences.
Okay.
In securing the property I have earned, on 1/26/06, I carbon copied to President Eric Garcetti a copy of a petition I faxed to my councilman that contains proposed manner of how this property may be transferred under my control and custody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donald Gaggen. After Donald Gaggen is Yolanda Ramirez.
City Council members, my name is Don Gaggen. I'm getting to feel a little like Melrose Larry Green in that I'm here a lot lately. I would like the council to revisit the issue of Lincoln Place. The city, or I won't call it the city, but the area of Venice has always been a donor to the city of Los Angeles. We are a city, or an area that's inundated in the summertime by hundreds and hundreds of people who come to the beach. And they come to the beach for various reasons. But the issue in Venice is that we don't have the infrastructure of the city, the way the city was laid out, to absorb what is going on in the city, which is development, development, development. The issue that I'm addressing is the Lincoln Place apartments. These are 1,000 units, or close to 1,000 units, of affordable housing. These people have been, by the city's own admission, less than, fairly treated. We urge the mayor to direct the city council, if it could be, but certainly Rocky D. Gardillo, who is the city attorney, to step up to the plate and do his duty, which is to enforce the agreement between the Lincoln Place Tenants Association and Aimco, or the Aimco, business before Aimco, which took over Aimco's responsibility. We think it's a disgrace to have people that are handicapped, people that are old and unable to access the system, being disrupted in their lives by being thrown out on the street. It's a morality issue, and since we're talking about issues from the heart today, it's an issue of the heart with me. I just went through, you're cutting me off, okay. Anyways, I'm pleading my case here for all of you people to revisit your position on Lincoln Place, and we urge your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yolanda Ramirez? Yolanda Ramirez? Yolanda's not here? Valentin Diaz? Valentin Diaz? Rose Murphy? Rose Murphy's coming down. After Rose Murphy is Erin Grayson.
Hello, council members. Am I, am I loud enough, you guys? Okay, because I have a big mouth, remember that. Anyway, thank you. We at Lincoln Place are advising City Council to file the conditions of the vesting tract map as was filed in November 2002. Why it was overlooked is a question that city attorneys have to answer and rectify as soon as possible. If you will save the seniors and disabled living at Lincoln Place, you know, that's the, the major issue now. We have searched for housing on the West Side to be near grocery stores, pharmacies, and, and public transportation. I don't drive, and so I depend on the bus service. And there has to be made available more low-income housing. This affordable housing is not affordable. Most of us, we cannot afford it. Some of us take home $800 a month, total. And how can we pay rent and exist, you know, paying utilities and buying food and all that? We just can't do it. So it, I don't know why City Hall can't, cannot eminent domain Lincoln Place to force Aimco to either open it up and start re-renting, even if they go to market rate, you know, but at least to rent or sell to another entity to open up to rent. Because it's, there's such a shortage here of low-income housing and affordable housing. And anyway, that's all I need to say. You guys have, have a job to do, so please help us. You guys have a job to do, so please help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Erin Grayson.
Good morning, council members. Mel Rosendahl, Eric Garcetti, Tom Labonge, Han, Councilmember Han, Padilla. Thank you all for being here and for listening to the public comment. We need sustainable communities. Wouldn't you agree? Lincoln Place, the South Central Farmers, Chase Knowles, these are examples of very community-oriented havens that need to be preserved. Affordable housing is an important issue I know that you all are thinking about, but we need to remember there is existing affordable housing in this city, and that truly needs to be preserved. It's time to do something. We know that you support us verbally. Let's get the action and move forward on it as soon as possible, because if these communities die, it will change the face of Los Angeles forever, and I'm afraid we won't want to look at that face. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Charity Colbert.
My name is Charity Love Colbert, and I was born and raised in Los Angeles for 53 years. I've lived in the Venice area back in the 70s, when it was really nice and very artistic and people cared about each other. And recently, I reside in the neighboring city of Santa Monica, and I've been a citizen of Santa Monica for the last 12 years. I feel that it is a travesty what is happening to the residents and families of Lincoln Place. I think it is inhumane to disrupt their lives and displace them after living in their homes for four to 40 years. I think the new owners, Aimco, should be accountable for the crimes that they are committing against these citizens, as well as what they have, what they have been doing to other people in other states, in other, you know, in our country. It could happen to you, it could happen to you and your families and friends and future. Would you please consider a moratorium upon big corporations tearing down sustainable dwellings, to bring in condos that will bring gridlock and major more-consuming? When we live in a world where there is already an abundance of suffering and people starving and living on the streets with inadequate health care and fresh water, education, jobs, job access, and shelter. Thank you. I appreciate you very much, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. Sheila Bernard is our next speaker. Ms. Bernard.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
You need to direct the planning department to record the conditions of approval of the Lincoln Place tract map for a number of reasons. One of them is that it should have happened a long time ago. A second reason is that it will help stop the evictions of 80-plus households that are threatened with evictions as early as March. And the third thing is it will show your resistance to the tactics of developers who are eroding the integrity of our city. It was said by someone, by a law professor, that where there's an injustice, there is a legal remedy, and we need to find that legal remedy. Now, if our city attorney can't do it, someone can. You need to find an attorney that can find a way to protect the integrity of our city. It's of paramount importance that you do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Gloria Morales is next, and then Barbara Eisenberg. Gloria Morales? Is Ms. Morales here? If not, okay, Barbara Eisenberg? Or Ms. Morales? And then Lucien Sayem. If I could ask folks maybe just to line up who are next in order, that way we'll keep the time. So Barbara Eisenberg, and then Lucien Sayem. Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like you to ask the City Council to tell the City Planning Department to file the condition of the vesting tract map, please, because we need our houses. You know, I have such a hard time looking for a house, and we don't have no money, we don't find no house, and the time is so short. Please, help us. We come the whole year, and nobody, like, nobody hear us. We need your help, please. We have like a month and a few days more to find a house, and we don't have any yet. So please, can you help us, Mr. Real? Please do something for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Eisenberg, Lucien Sayem, and Roberto Carvajal will be after that. Please go.
Good morning, honorable council members. I have come here today as a desperate representative of the renting class of very low-income tenants. This publication from the city, published in the year 2000, indicates that a housing crisis was recognized even six years ago. Today, it is much worse. In these six years, LA has been designated the city with the largest homeless population. At this very moment, there are over 700 rental units sitting empty in one location at Lincoln Place Apartments in Venice. The remaining seniors and disabled who have been Ellis acted out will be added to this ever-growing homeless population on March 20th. These people are on fixed incomes, which are so low that there's absolutely no place for them to go. Because of age and income factors, they do not have internet access. To help them, I have looked into every resource available, including Westside Rentals, Craigslist, FirstGov.hudresources, with no success. Their, all hud resources have two- to five-year waiting lists. The other online resources have prices which are completely unavailable price-wise to a senior, whose entire social security check is based on a lifetime of working for small change per hour. In the period of time these folks work to support themselves and their families, they receive perhaps between 50 cents and $1.50 per hour. This amounts to around $600 from social security. My ciphering skills are pretty good, and I know that even two $600 social security roommates cannot pay an $1,800 per month rent. I was almost prepared to leave the city and the state for affordable accommodations, but these rents are the same all over the country. Not only is there a serious housing crisis for the well-to-do, but it is even more severe for the very low-income persons. In addition to pricing out the low-income seniors and disabled, the community loses its neighborhood. This is the loss of the children and the most important resource of experience for the children, the seniors.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude. Thank you. We can make sure that the card gets that. That's why we have the clock there, so that folks can follow the time. Thank you very much. Lucien Sayem. And then Roberto Carvajal and Felicia Ford, if I can ask them both to, please stand behind her. Thank you.
My name is Lucien Sayem.
Why don't you come a little bit closer if you can? Thank you so much.
My name is Lucien Sayem.
Thank you.
And I have lived at Lincoln Place since April of 1974, and I don't want to be Ellis out in March. There are no affordable apartments. I'm proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Roberto Carvajal and Felicia Ford will be after that, as well as Father Richard Estrada.
Good morning. I'm here to speak about hate crime committed against Elio Carrion the other day by sheriff's deputy. As you know, it was a black person that shot that innocent man on the ground like a dog. And so far, no one has come up and spoke to the issue of called all the Mexican leadership from Juiz Reyes, Padilla, Cárdenas, Ms. Molina, and Mr. Vidal Gosa. Nobody's commenting on it. Nobody stepped forward and, as a gentleman said, stepped up to the plate. And I'm just wondering what's going on with that. We've all formulated an opinion. We know it was an attempted murder. It was a premeditated shooting, and I can't believe this man's walking around free, probably still armed. I'm wondering if there's anybody in your offices that would like to comment on it. My name is Roberto Carvajal. I'm at 213-622-0858. I went down there to see Mr. Carrion yesterday at the hospital out in, I don't know, that area with Mr. Ted Hayes. And Rodney King was there, and Mr. Ted Hayes and I, and basically, there was no other person there representing this man. No, no one from the Mexican community was there. And I was just as equally shocked at their absence and at yours, at your silence, as I am at that shooting. It's just as if you held the gun yourselves and shot that man. Mr. Hayes has challenged the black community to come out against this, and I really don't think without their assistance, we're going to get anything done. I believe it was a racially motivated hate crime. It should be addressed that way. And just asking for the public to call, you know, get involved and get something done about this. I know that you understand some of your people say that it's a jurisdictional matter, but I believe that it's, it's more than that. It's, it's a social matter. You know, when you're hiring police and you're not testing them properly, and this guy seeps through the cracks and nobody can tell that he's a racist pig, I mean, somebody ought to.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Before Ms. Ford speaks, I'd like to call Mr. Rosendahl for reaction to some of the previous speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lincoln Place, Lincoln Place, Lincoln Place will go down in history as an example of the outrageousness of the Ellis Act. I'm not a lawyer, but every time I ask our city attorneys for some help, some support on this issue, all I get is, we can do nothing about it. The Ellis Act is one thing, and development is another thing. And when I keep raising the issue about the tract map and the conditions, they say, well, it hasn't been filed yet. These conditions basically said that tenants have rights and that they should not be thrown out. So for a quirk in the law, and for one being a state law, another one being a city law, they're throwing people out. 58 were thrown out in December, right around the holidays, and now the remaining 83 will be thrown out after March 20th unless we, the city, come to the aid of these people. You saw some of the people speak today. They're in their 80s, and this has been their home, not just an apartment as people move and go. They've been living there 20, 30, 40 years. They have no place to go. And for us to just sit here, day after day, and see this going on is just too much. And I really would like to see the city attorneys give us some real understanding about the tract map and the conditions and why they don't apply. Because if they come to me in a few months, and all of a sudden, out of the woodwork, all this stuff happens, and these people have been thrown out on the street, I'll not forget it. I just think it's outrageous what's going on with middle-class housing in this great city. The Ellis Act is being used by developers as a way to get rid of middle-class people and create high-end condos for profits. It's people over profits. That's why we're sitting around this horseshoe. It's people that we care for, and I support the Lincoln tenants in their battle to stay in that complex. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl. Felicia Ford. And then it'll be Father Richard Estrada and company. Please.
Good morning, council. My presence here today is to give homage to the passing of Coretta Scott King, the late Dr. Martha Luthy King's wife. Mrs. Coretta King, a woman of sound mind and incredible wisdom and courage and strength, a woman who left a lifetime of a beacon of hope to all God's rainbow of children, especially brown and black children of color. The remarkable grace of the words stated by Coretta King's late husband, I had a dream that one day, all God's children, white, black, Hispanic, all cultures of race, would join hands together and respect and love one another with no separation of color. Coretta Scott King, her late husband and her will always be welcome, a welcome guest in millions of homes, in spirit and in thought across this country. She is undoubtedly left, no question, a huge beacon of hope for us to continue to reach our dreams. To the King family, all is well with her soul, and now she can rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Father Richard Estrada, Odele Romero, Angela Zambrano.
Good morning. I'd like to have someone go before me. Angela Zambrano, Executive Director of CARESIN.
Good morning. Buenos dias. We're members of La Placita Justice Immigrants, Justice for Immigrants Working Group. We're here this morning to urge City Council to vote in favor of the resolution which would be introduced by Councilmember Erez later on this morning, opposing HR 4437. HR 4437 is the most vicious anti-immigrant legislation we have seen during our lifetime. Among other things, HR 4437 turns into aggravated felon, anyone who resides in the United States without authorization, and anyone who assists them, including their spouses, their friends, their employers, clergy, doctors, teachers, and social services providers. We can go to jail for five years for assisting an undocumented person. It is truly insane. It also requires that police officers enforce immigration law. HR 4437, passed by the House in December, is expected to be taken up by the Senate later on this month. So for this reason, it is critical that the city of Los Angeles send a strong message to Congress that we oppose HR 4437 and support comprehensive immigration reform that provides permanent residence with a path to citizenship. So we join the City Council, Erez and the rest of the City Council, to support the resolution. We have gathered in 10 days, 10,000 signatures, 1,000 signatures a day, and it comes from all of your districts, okay? So it's not just Erez's district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some of the other speakers, if somebody else would like to come forward. Gloria Saucedo and Beatrice Recarete.
Padre Benesina. Dois que no venen, o ratro base tun gangaz. Ya shnav dare kuncha. Viguno, o ratri esun negna n'tukushin. Buenos dias. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Odele Romero. I'm the Bino National Coordinator for Frente Indigene de Organizaciones Binacionales. What I said in my first language, Zapoteco, is, as native people of the Americas, we ask you to oppose HR 4437, just as we do to oppose the criminalization of our brothers, of our sisters, our hard-working family members. For that same reason, we contribute to the collection of these signatures of the indigenous people here in Los Angeles to show our rejection to this inhumane bill. We also work in the circle. That's our belief as indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Gloria Saucedo, y represento a Armandad Mexicana en el Valle de San Fernando. Estamos aquí porque queremos oponer.
One moment for translation, okay?
Excuse me?
We're going to have somebody translate simultaneously. Are you going to say it in English as well?
I will do it in English a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Okay. We are here because we oppose the HR 4437, especially because we need to, it's better to prevent any raids, any action they are taking already, the police, with the people who, what happened last week. Also, you need to remember what happened two years ago, when they had raids in the cities, the kids don't go to school, they don't go to the hospital, they don't go to buy. And this is why it's very important that you, the law of the city, they need to prevent that. Nosotros estamos aquí para pedir que todos ustedes tengan la oposición para la ley 4437, especialmente en el Valle de San Fernando, ya que hemos visto que anteriormente todo lo que pasa.
We're here to ask all of you to please oppose law 4437, especially in the valley, in the San Fernando Valley. You've seen everything that's taken place.
Acuérdense que hace dos años hubo una redadas en la ciudad, y qué pasó? Había caos en nuestras comunidades. Las personas no iban a comprar, las personas no mandaron a las niñas a la escuela.
You noticed that about a couple of years ago, there were raids around? You noticed that a couple of years ago, there were raids all over our communities. A lot of people were not going shopping, their kids were not going to school, people were not attending their doctor appointments.
Y es mejor prevenir que lamentar. Es más fácil prevenir, gastamos menos dinero en prevención que en...
en prevención que en tener redadas.
It is much better to be prevented beforehand than to be sorry at the end of the day. We spend more money in prevention rather than in this rates are taking place.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
Good morning. My name is Beatrice Ricardi, and I represent the women from the Federaciones Mexicanas, and I'm here also to oppose the H.R. 4437 and work for a comprehensive immigration reform. We're also supporting Order 40, and I plead, please, not to go back to the MacArthur era into which there were so many wrong things about certain things that definitely are out of line. So please support us and have a good morning.
I'm Father Richard Estrada. I am a clariation missionary. I work and live at Our Lady Queen of Angels Catholic Church, two, three blocks away from here. H.R. 4437 is truly bad legislation. Tell you what it's been doing to the immigrant community in Los Angeles. Like I said, I live at La Placita. Twelve thousand immigrants come every weekend. They are traumatized. They're very nervous, and they're under a lot of stress because of what they hear that might happen to them. They may go to jail, or they may be separated from their families. They don't want to see a wall along the border. Reminds them of the Berlin Wall. This legislation comes out of fear, and it puts people in fear, and we don't want that in our city. We also want to salute and support the resolution, the Garcetti-Reyes resolution. We don't want to see Minutemen in our urban cities or along the borders. I'll tell you a quick story, that for five years, we have been going to the desert every summer when it's hot. We go along the border to take water to people. And last year, we understood and we heard that the Minutemen were going to go out waiting for us, and they wanted to aggravate us so that we could look pretty bad. So we tricked them. We didn't go on the day that we said we were going to go.
I can ask you to conclude, Father Estrada.
But it comes out of hate and prejudice, so it's a bad bill.
Thank you very much, Father Estrada.
Mr. Garcetti, I put my name under the item for Ed's motion. I wonder if I could speak now and not have to...
If it's about Item 7, it would actually be out of order to talk to you right now. Legally, we can only talk about things that are not agendized right now. If you want to talk about what everybody else has been talking about...
But everybody's been talking about it.
Then that would be fine. I'll move your card there.
I think it's very appropriate. My name's Rosa Leo Munoz, and I'm with the working group from La Placita and also Interfaith Communities United for Peace and Justice. And it's good that we're here in African-American History Month, thinking about this Sensenbrenner bill. Because the parallel is that it's like the Fugitive Slave Act for what President Bush is proposing, kind of a urban braceto program for our whole country in his guest worker program. The Sensenbrenner bill was opposed when it was by the American Jewish Committee, the FLCIO, the Change to Win Unions, the Catholic Bishops. Three hundred national organizations are opposed to the Sensenbrenner bill. Now that bill and the whole issue is going to come to the Senate, and we have Senator Dianne Feinstein on the Judiciary Committee, and we hope that this group can not only just pass a resolution, but be vocal and convince our Senator Feinstein to stand up strong against the Sensenbrenner Act and to fight strongly for a real path to citizenship, permanent residents, not temporary workers. What's being proposed is permanent cheap labor and a temporary workforce that can't vote for unions or can't vote for the politicians that handle their tax monies that they pay. So we urge you very seriously, this is a historic moment. I grew up in the '50s, and we had Operation Wetback and concentration camps in the Elysian Hills. It's the same time of Bloody Christmas, the McCarthy era, the same time of Chavez Ravine. We don't want to return to that. You know, we had elected one city councilman before all those things, and then we didn't elect another one for 35 years. And so it's also an attack on the empowerment of Latinos and people of color. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to close public comment at this time. Thank you all to everybody. And if we can go through the agenda, please, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel President?
Oh, yes, Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry.
I wanted to be very clear to the speakers and those listening, that we introduced this motion as a Rule 16. We will be hearing it next week, just for the sake of clarity of process. Thank you.
Mr. Zion?
Comment on this briefly. For the members that spoke, the issue is of a national importance, and the National League of Cities has taken this issue up. I am the Chair of the National League of Cities Immigration Task Force. We're going to be in Washington, DC, reviewing this with cities across the country, very sensitive to this issue and the sentiments that you reflect, the same sentiments that we've heard from other cities around the country. But it's Los Angeles, the task force that is leading this National League of Cities on this endeavor. So I want to assure you that we're sensitive to your concerns and your issues, and we'll be carrying forth that measure to Washington, DC.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the citizens who came up here and spoke the way you have. There are 11 million people in the United States right now who are undocumented. They're living in the shadows. They don't have their basic civil rights. They do pay taxes. They're not citizens. We need to revisit our Immigration Act, and frankly, we need to be bold. I think the dialogue in Washington should say, "All those folks that have extended families here, that are part of family networks, we're going to give them amnesty, and we're going to make them Frankly, I'm tired of our double standards. On the one hand, we say, "We don't want these people. They're illegal," and the next minute, they're trimming our trees, they're doing our gardening, they're serving our meals. Let's get out of this phony schizophrenia and deal with the honesty and the reality of these people. They should be treated with respect and dignity, and I look forward to us here as a city providing leadership. We have more undocumented immigrants in Los Angeles County than anywhere in the nation, and we need to give these people dignity and support, and we need to grant them amnesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weezer, and I know a lot of these issues will be on Item 7 as well, colleagues, just as that comes up. Mr. Weezer?
Just briefly, I wanted to mention that I was happy to second the motion by Councilmember Reyes. As an immigrant myself, I fully understand the hatred and the suspicion that this may create. It's not good policy. It's not human. We have a lot more to say about this when the motion actually comes up, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can run through the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, before beginning the agenda, there has been a request to continue Item 6 to Tuesday, February 7.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any objection to continuing that? If not, unanimous vote, so ordered.
There's also been a request to continue Item 10 for 30 days to March 3.
Item 10, any objection, colleagues? If not, unanimous vote, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 15, with the exceptions of 6 and 10, are items for which public hearings have been held. The Personnel Committee has submitted its report for Item 9, and that has been circulated.
Specials, colleagues?
Eight and 14.
Eight and 14, from Ms. Han. Mr. Padilla, did you? Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Nine, we're not quite there. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes, number 7, should we call? Any other? Okay. Seeing none, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 22, are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to just ask that Number 20 be continued next week. There are some requests made by Mr. Parks' office and myself as on the Budget and Finance Committee because it doesn't meet some of the criteria we established last year yet. So I'd like the CAO to report back to us next week if Tuesday...
On Tuesday? Okay. If there's no objection to continuing Item 20 until next Tuesday, that'll be unanimous vote, so ordered. Mr. Rosendahl?
Nineteen special.
Nineteen, we'll call special. And Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I apologize, Counsel President. I wanted to call Item 7 special, but really quick.
We'll reconsider that as soon as we run through these items. Any other specials on this batch, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Padilla?
With the concurrence of the Chair of the Commerce Committee, of the new committee, request that Item 18 be continued on behalf of Mr. Parks and Mr. Cardenas until February 15.
February 15 on Item 18, any objection, colleagues? If not, that's a unanimous vote, so ordered. Okay. Any other specials? Yes, Mr. Reyes?
Item 22, please.
22, special? Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, if you'll please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote on the balance of the items.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items?
That would take you back to the items called special, or do you wish to reconsider Item 7 at this time?
Why don't we reconsider Item 7? If we can open the roll on reconsideration, if there's no objection, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is before. So we'll call that special. Mr. Reyes?
And that would be the first item called special.
Okay. Ms. Han asked for Item 8 first. If we can call that, if there's no objection to that, colleagues, let's take up Item Number 8. Ms. Han?
Thank you, colleagues. And I know we have a number of speakers that have been here since 9:30 this morning, when we had a previous press conference. And colleagues, today I am joined by labor leaders, business groups, and environmental activists, and we're here to show support for a Clean Ship Treaty. And this treaty is known as MARPALE Annex 6. And in short, it provides international limits on emissions from ship exhaust and requires ships to use low sulfur fuel. It also allows member states to become sulfur emission control areas, limiting the sulfur content in fuel used by ships. And this is a resolution before us today, colleagues, that will urge the United States Senate to ratify MARPALE Annex 6, and I hope you will join me in that today. I represent, as you know, hundreds of thousands of people in San Pedro and Wilmington, and I also feel like I represent the thousands of men and women that work on the docks day in and day out. I represent the faces of goods movement. And unfortunately, these people are suffering. These people are dying. Port pollution is dramatically impacting the quality of life for those that live and work near our ports, and we must do something together about that now. Listen to these facts. A recent California Air Resources Board report blames 2005 cargo-related pollution for a number of problems. Just this past year, in California, cargo-related pollution was responsible for 750 premature deaths, 18,000 asthma attacks, 160,000 lost days of work, 1.1 million days of restricted activities. And listen to this. Cargo-related pollution is traced to 350,000 school absences, which means our kids are not learning because they're not in school because of port pollution. We cannot tolerate this any longer. And let me be clear, this does not just affect Wilmington and San Pedro and what happens in the harbor area. Diesel fumes generated within the boundaries of the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach are elevating the risk of cancer as far as 15 miles inland. Port-related pollution is responsible for the majority of air pollution in the Los Angeles Basin. And here's another interesting statistic. Twenty percent of all the air pollution in the Los Angeles Basin is caused by ships. So this would be a way that we could really take a significant chunk out of the emissions that are coming into the Los Angeles area by signing on to this treaty. If embraced by the world, this treaty could make a huge difference in worldwide air emissions. It has been adopted by 30 maritime nations, but it has not yet been adopted by one country in North America. The United States would be the first nation to do this. And I think today, having the City of Los Angeles, the second-largest city in the country, urging our United States Senate to stand up and take a stand against something that we just haven't been paying attention to before, and that was the emissions that come from ships. The international trade industry is booming. The cargo is expected to triple in 20 years coming through America's port. We're proud of that, but no longer should we make the distinction between good jobs and clean air. We can have both, and this is a way to do it. I hope you will join me today unanimously in sending this message loud and clear to our United States Senate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Our next speaker is Mr. Labans, to be followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ms. Han, thank you very much for your leadership on this. You don't like my football analogies, Janice, but this Sunday, Pittsburgh's playing in the football game against Seattle. And if we are, what's our image of Pittsburgh? Our image of Pittsburgh has long changed because if you remember when Carnegie was these big smokestacks, that was our image of Pittsburgh. Well, now, the image of what is portrayed is the challenge of the ports and the shipping. And you are very responsive to this challenge of the port and bringing this to our attention that we have to do something. Because as you know, when we sometimes chat about issues of the city, we talk about the various scenes of the city, there's sometimes a low inversion of haze, not fog, but haze created by smoke. Mr. Rosendahl, you know where the term "smoke" comes from? Smog? Smog. How do you derive smog? Well, how's it...
Smoke and fog.
Smoke and fog. So the ocean air and fog, smoke, S-M-O-G. Okay, you learned something today. You lead that way. With that in mind, Ms. Han, this effort will be a start. And when you talk about the international community, shipping is an international, great history in it. And to start this way, I'm just so proud of your leading the effort on this council, because that's what's something we all could stand up for when they talk about policies which are important to have, I do believe, policies that make a difference. And we could start here in the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach as well, because I know Long Beach is going to join us in this effort here. Thank you for your leadership on this, Ms. Han. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I believe I'm going to, I would have to move to reopen public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, you would.
I would like to move to open public comment. We've had people here from labor, business, environmental issues that would like to say a few words to us. So if you wouldn't, we would indulge me in opening public comment.
How long?
How long?
We've got, so you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight cards.
How about 10 minutes?
10 minutes?
Great. 10 minutes.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl, would you like to speak first, or...
Yeah, if I could, just real quickly, I just want to acknowledge again, Janice, Han, one thing that I like about this horseshoe down here, I can actually see you when you're speaking and catch your passion and actually catch the dimensions of an issue. And on this particular issue, I was listening to NPR this morning, one of the few stations I can really learn something from on the radio, and as I came in, they were talking about particular matter. And the EPA still has not worked out with the private sector about particular matter. We all know it creates cancer.
Right.
It creates cancer, and these ships are creating cancer in the basin. That air is filthy, and it's coming from them. And your leadership on this is fantastic. God bless you for doing it, Janice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection to public comment, we'll consider that unanimous vote. And after public comment, Mr. Padilla will be our next speaker. If I can ask, from the public, James Spinosa, Ray Ortiz Jr., Hope Witkowski, who's Councilwoman visiting us from the City of Torrance.
Yes.
Welcome. It's always a pleasure to have a colleague from a neighboring city here. And those will be the first three speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. My name is James Spinosa. I'm the International President with the ILW, the International Longshore and Warehouse Union. I represent some 60,000 workers in our union, over 20,000 workers which work in the harbors. I myself live in San Pedro, raised there all my life, and I can tell you that we are a proud workforce, one that has established many, many long years of hard work in the harbors, moving cargo and breaking... harbors, moving cargo and breaking records every year as a workforce to maintain the standards that this country is expecting us to achieve. But again, over and over again, for many years, as you know, the longshore workforce is probably second to none in safety and deaths and different tragedies that happen on the waterfront. We have long, long pursued the goal of having our environment and our pollution and our ports dealt with. It is time to meet this need. While we support growth, but it has to come with health and safety in the forefront. And along with our communities, we wear two hats as waterfront workers. We—while we service the ports, many of us live in the ports, these are our communities, these are our children, and our families that are there also enduring the pollution of the ports. So we ask for your adoption of this resolution and support. We stand ready to work with all the stakeholders to see that this gets done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Garcetti.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
And members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Hope Witkowski. I'm a Torrance City Councilwoman and a member of the South Bay Council of Government. And I was the only one from the council that's here, so I'd say I'm representing them. I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Hahn on this resolution that's coming before all of you. And hearing some of you speak, it seems like it's going to be a shoo-in for passing. But I would just like to say for the record that this isn't a San Pedro problem. And I'm a native Angelino, born and raised in Los Angeles, and I remember what smog was like, and I know we've done some great work, but now we're going backward. And what we're looking at here is your vote and the vote of the Senate to pass this thing is going to be record-breaking for the health of our future generations. My grandkids live here now, and you go all the way up to the seniors, too, which I represent very highly, a senior group. So the whole gamut, we're talking about the history. And I think that Councilwoman Hahn came to the COG and did her presentation, and when I heard all this, it's like I didn't want to miss the opportunity to come here and say that each of us elected officials can be cutting-edge change masters here. And I congratulate Hahn and for the health and welfare of the United States of America. We could be the ones, the catalyst. Let's get our Congress, our senators, all of that onboard with us, and I urge—I know you all will vote for this, but thank you. And it's been a pleasure to be here today. I've never been in the council chambers. It's very impressive. Thank you for all your good work that you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And we certainly invite you back, and we hope to return the favor and visit you sometime in Torrance. Thank you so much. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, my name is Ray Ortiz. I represent ILW. But today, I'm wearing two hats. I'm also a resident of L.A., San Pedro, for over 55 years with my family, going on 100 years in San Pedro. What we face here today—and I'd like to thank Mayor Bellegrosa, Janice Hahn—we just had a clean air, faster freight, clean air down in Southern California, Long Beach. And it was very evident—the players there—that the industry can run, but they can't hide. What I mean by that, the industry leaders, whether it's the carriers, the shippers, the retailers, their presence was very minimal. Because what we're trying to accomplish is a green port, following Mayor Bellegrosa's statements and his actions. In doing so, one of the major hurdles and problems will be funding. Everybody asks, where's the money coming from? The feds are broke, the states broke. Hopefully, our great city is going to have to get creative with all this intelligence that I'm looking at here today through the elected officials. I know they will find a resolve. The money is there. You read Wall Street, the trade magazines, where they're coming from, profits are up. The money is there. Finding that middle ground will be the question, trying to get the big players, whether it's the Walmarts, the Targets, the oil companies, the shippers, the retailers. Somebody's got to pay for this, and it cannot be put on the burden of the working class in the community. We'll do our share, but the money is available. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just remind the folks, we have six more cards and four and a half minutes left. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that, quite read this. I think Joanne Vallée? Joanne Vallée? Or Valle? Nope, they're gone. Okay, Brendan Huffman?
He's not here.
Brendan Huffman here, okay. Melissa Lynn Perella? Followed by Dr. Ralph Appi and Dan Hoffman, and then T.L. Garrett.
Good morning, members of the City Council. My name is Melissa Lynn Perella, and I'm an attorney with the Natural Resources Defense Council. I gave these same remarks this morning at Councilmember Hahn's press conference, but I think that they're worth repeating. As many of you know, for years, NRDC has worked hard to clean up port pollution. And today, I'm excited to join the L.A. City Council in calling upon the federal government to ratify Annex Six of the MARPALE Treaty. Ocean-going vessels run off of what is known as bunker fuel, which is literally toxic sludge. When burned, it spews particulate matter and other pollutants into the air we breathe, harming all Angelinos, especially those who live close to the port. In fact, the dirty fuel burned by these ships was responsible for hundreds upon hundreds of premature deaths in California last year, and things will only get worse as cargo is expected to triple by 2025. We have got to clean up these ships. Ratifying Annex Six of the MARPALE Treaty can help us do that, but it's only a start, and we continue to need your leadership. The city of Los Angeles is number one in port cargo volume. It is number one in air pollution. Now let it be number one in protecting human health. NRDC looks forward to working with the city of Los Angeles to green our port. Together, we can make sure that L.A. has a port that is good for business and good for our health. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ralph Appi?
Thank you very much. I'm the Environmental Manager for the Port of Los Angeles, and I think Councilwoman Hahn spoke very eloquently on this. I just want to add that, in fact, the port is in favor of this. We had a motion. We helped with the EAD write the report. What you're looking at here, though, is a couple of things: Reduced emissions. We're looking at creating an even playing field, and also, it creates a market for this fuel, which we cannot overlook. We need to work not only here, but in Europe and also in Asia to help this come into effect, and this is an important step. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Hoffman?
Good morning, honorable council members. I'm here on behalf of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce and our Councilwoman, Janice Hahn. And it sounds like many of you to support the MARPALE Treaty. We believe that it'll create an equal playing field, that in this environment, we can still build business, create jobs, but we can do it in a cleaner and a healthier environment. Thank you very much.
We appreciate your patience and your comments today. T.L. Garrett is our final speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm T.L. Garrett. I'm with the Pacific Immersion Shipping Association. We represent the ocean carriers and the terminal operators up and down the West Coast of the United States. I was asked—also asked by Brendan Huffman to speak on behalf of the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. We fully support this resolution. We hope that you will indeed pass it today. We see this as an important first step to moving towards cleaner air in the ports up and down the coast, and actually throughout America with the North American provisions. We sponsored Assembly Joint Resolution Eight last year in the legislature. It passed by a vote of 70 to zero. There is tremendous consensus and momentum behind this. The time to act now is now. It's time to get the Senate onboard, and we ask for you to pass this resolution and empower the mayor to lobby on behalf of getting this passed for the benefit of us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. That closes our public comment. The 26 seconds to spare. Mr. Padilla, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Hahn. And I would just remind colleagues, we have, I think, four other items called special, some with speaker cards, and because of excuses that people have been granted, we are due to lose a quorum at noon. So if folks would just keep their comments as quick as possible. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll try to be brief, colleagues. First, I want to commend Janice Hahn for her leadership down in the 15th Council District for the entire region, as she articulated, when it comes to the impact of the port on the region. For as much emphasis as there is on the economic benefits of the Port of Los Angeles, not enough attention has been paid on the environmental side of the port's impacts on the region. And just wanted to put it in a little bit more of a regional or broader context here with all the talk out of our state leaders, from the governor to Assembly and Senate leaders about infrastructure in California and the need to invest in our infrastructure in California. For the first time, we're hearing at the state level talk of goods movement and air quality improvements in the same sentence.
Right.
And I think that bodes very, very well, and the step we're taking here today fits right in hand. So as we're planning, as the city of Los Angeles and as the region, for our fair share of the state infrastructure bond money, for the proper investments in our local infrastructure, I think this is going to be a centerpiece of that entire package.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you. I'm very pleased to join with Mr. Padilla and others in commending Ms. Hahn for her leadership on this. You know, I served in this chamber for 24 years as a deputy, and I don't remember ever discussions about anything about the harbor, but the bottom-line issues, what—
Right.
—how much money we're making down there. We never talked about the impact that harbor has on not just the lives of people in the harbor or 15 miles, but really the world. And I'll give you an example of this. I want you to know this. We have the AMP program, thanks to your leadership down there, and we're talking about idling ships and plugging them to mobile sources rather than diesel sources. I met with the Council General of Her Majesty's Government the other day in Great Britain. They're copying what you did in London now, because they say, if L.A. does it, why shouldn't we do it? And everyone's looking toward your leadership. And so truly, what you've done there is impacting the world, Janice, and I commend you for that. And certainly on goods movement, all those issues that we're tackling now, and as Alex said, in the same breath, we're talking about the sociological impacts, as well as the health impacts, as well as the bottom line, all in one sentence, which has never, ever been done. So I commend you for that leadership and bring us to that thought process which needed to be done. So thank you, and I'm happy to deliver the entire Republican caucus on this vote, both of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, colleagues. Well, you make me very proud to be a member of this body, and I think what we're doing today is extremely important, and it will have international significance. And I really wanted everyone to speak, and I'm glad those of you that stayed here, because for us to really see that labor, business, the Chamber of Commerce, a neighboring city, the Councilwoman Hope Witkowski, the NRDC, a great champion for environmental justice, everyone came to—the shipping industry. The shipping industry is supportive of this. I think that is the message, that all walks of life are coming together to say, it is time internationally—for us to pay attention to the air we breathe on planet Earth, and this will make a difference. I'm proud of us today, and I know I'm going to have unanimous support.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank you for your leadership on this. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on this item?
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item. Let's take this—
Fourth with—
Okay, we'll go forth with on that item.
Item seven was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item seven.
Thank you, council colleagues. No more press for time, but this resolution requests that the council support state or federal legislation denouncing and prohibiting the vigilante actions of individuals against immigrants along the border, within urban communities, and enact immigration reform leading towards a path of permanent status for immigrants here, now, and wider legal challenges for those coming in the future. We are trying to say, colleagues, that no one—shall I put it this way—neither state or federal legislation has come forward to counter the meanness, the nastiness, the racist actions of many who would take it upon their own hands to attack human beings. This country is a country of immigrants. This country was born and built on the back of immigrants. And today, we're looking at trends that we tend to see in its cyclical history. Every time there's economic pressure, every time there is a need for us to look at a scapegoat community or population, those who are most vulnerable are the ones that are attacked first. What we're saying as a council, as one of the major cities in this country, that this has to stop, that we have to send a long signal that we do treasure our communities, our individuals who make up these communities, and we have to send a statement that tells everyone that we need to provide humane legislation and not legislation of hate. So I ask you for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for those words. And I want to thank everybody who's come down on this item as well to speak out and make sure that history is not rewritten. Los Angeles' history is a history of immigrants, from the first 44 pobladores, the settlers who came here, all Spanish subjects, but they were of African, Asian, American, and European descent. When you hear folks who invoke the name of Minutemen in this day and age, when the history of the real Minutemen, as our mayor has pointed out, is also a history of immigrants from Scotland and from Germany and from other places that were outcasts themselves and who helped lead a revolution here in this country that led to this country becoming a beacon of freedom and liberty for the world, we have to keep that legacy going. And those who would take that legacy and somehow distort it—we are a city of laws, we are a nation of laws. And when we don't like those laws, or we don't like what's happening, we seek to do them in places like this, not out there on the street with the mob. That is what distinguished us from other countries. It is what has made America great. It is—we have been at our worst when those take to the streets with lynchings, those take to the streets to enforce the law themselves. If we see something wrong, we should join together and reform it together in the right places, in the halls of Congress, where this resolution calls for real immigration reform, so that we can take people out of the shadows and bring them into the light, so that we can give people the rights and the responsibilities of full citizenship, and see that great American tradition that all of us are a part of, of each one of our migrants and ancestors who have come here, some of them in chains, but some of them willfully, some of them 10,000 years ago, and some of them probably just a couple days ago, that they have been a part of that American tradition of becoming part of a great society. And those, as was so articulately said in the press conference we had earlier, who would turn us towards hate and division are not welcome in this city and are not welcome in this country. Those who are interested in sitting down and having the more difficult conversations of democracy about true reform, about making sure that we enforce our laws in the right ways and at the same time protect the rights of everybody and our Constitution through people who are sworn to uphold the Constitution, namely our officers, our peace officers, and those of us here who are elected officials, that is the right way to make change. So we stand very strongly today with immigrant rights community and with all Angelinos who recognize that history that has made us great and this country great, too. I thank you for your support, colleagues.
Mr. Rosendahl?
I pretty well said it before, but I just want to thank my two colleagues, Ed Reyes and Eric Garcetti, for the leadership on this. You know, it's an American dilemma. On the one hand, we want labor to do our work and work in the yards and in the homes, and then in the next hand, we say we don't want any illegal immigrants. So we're in a schizophrenic mode. What we have to realize is that all of us, except for the American Indian, are immigrants. My parents were immigrants from Germany. Everybody thinks I've been here 15 generations. They came to New York, they met each other. What we see here right now in our great country is creating a further divide between ourselves, and it's not healthy for democracy. Vigilante business is a symbolic insanity, frankly, and we should abhor it, and I support this position by my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Anybody else who's wishing to speak? Please—Mr. Zine, sit down.
I just want to mention one more time, since we're discussing this again, that the National League of Cities, which represents cities across this country, has taken this as one of the major issues. And in March, this issue, the vigilanteism, the people who want to arm themselves and allegedly protect the borders, that issue is the front not only in California but in other border states. That's a major issue for National League of Cities. This task force is going to be addressing that, as well as immigrants in Los Angeles and throughout the country, and how that will work for all the cities across America. The police department, and I served there as a reserve officer with Councilmember Greg Smith, we don't have enough officers to handle the routine calls for service, leave alone, go out and do immigration enforcement, and that's reflective throughout this country. So we want people to find that American dream. We've all found it here. My relatives came over on a boat from the Middle East. Many of my colleagues' relatives came over here. We are accomplishing the American dream. We want to provide that opportunity. So we will work on that. We are working with Maldeff and other organizations that represent the diversity of groups. And when we look at America, whether it's Tennessee or Los Angeles, New York or Chicago, we are a city, we are a nation, we're a country of immigrants to work together. we are a city, we are a nation, we're a country of immigrants to work together. Separate that from the criminal element, whether they're Latino or African-American or white or Middle Eastern, the criminal element's a criminal element, and the criminal justice system deals with that. But as far as people coming home for the American dream, everyone in political office that I've spoken to supports that. We will come up with a plan that will work for the immigrants, for the people who are here legally and illegally, so we can work together and maintain what we have in America, freedom and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And I know there was a number of speaker cards that were submitted. We've had public comment, and due to the time, I'll just read these into the record. Cesar Calderon, Rishma Shamasundar, Angela Salas, Raoul Aniorewe, and we have Richard, day laborer from Los Angeles, and Leslie Radford. Thank you and for your understanding with that. Please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item passes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item 14 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, if I could have quickly someone who's here from the port or Emergency Preparedness Department to come forward. Colleagues, I introduce this motion asking for a report back on how we did during the 2005 tsunami warning, that it actually was broadcast over the television for a couple hours. It was expected to hit San Pedro at 10 o'clock one night. I found myself getting calls from people who were watching TV and said, are you sitting down, Councilwoman Hahn? You know, tsunami is expected to hit San Pedro at 10 o'clock tonight. I began getting on the phone, and what I found was a lot of confusion, a lot of disorientation, a lot of mixed messages, everyone from our police officers to even our port pilots, the Coast Guard, and certainly our own Department of Emergency Preparedness, I thought was not prepared. So I asked for all of these departments to report back on how they think they handled that. Thank God that was not a real tsunami, but if that was even a drill, I thought we failed miserably in terms of notification and then in terms of any evacuation plan that might be put in place, not only for the residents of the low-lying areas of San Pedro and Wilmington, but for the dock workers. And found out the next morning that our men and women working on the docks that night were never told about it, were never warned, and even if they were, there was not a very good evacuation plan. So I kind of had two tracks on this. One, how do we notify the appropriate agencies if something like that were to happen? And then how would we indeed evacuate for a tsunami, which is a different kind of an evacuation than another national, a natural disaster? So I just wanted to ask those of you at the table to tell me what lessons we might have learned from June 14th? Are we better equipped if that happens again? And what is underway in terms of a major evacuation plan in place for the harbor area? Whoever wants to answer, Cam.
Good morning. Jim Featherstone, Emergency Preparedness Department. Yes, ma'am, you're absolutely right. The notification system that we experienced, the last tsunami, was grossly inadequate. And subsequent to that, a task force was developed to look at the tsunami warning process in total, and we've identified several issues from equipment to process. Right now, we're looking at moving toward the tsunami readiness community, tsunami-ready community certification, but that, to be very honest...
How close are we to becoming tsunami-ready?
If we aggressively pursuing that certification, it's probably about 12 months out, because there are a number of factors that have to be met to... Yes, ma'am.
That's unfortunate, and I would do everything I could to speed that up. That 12 months out is not good enough for us to become tsunami-ready. And what tsunami-ready means, colleagues, is that we actually will have signage showing evacuation routes, hopefully sirens, hopefully some kind of a warning system. So 12 months out is way too long for me, since we've been doing this since 2004.
Yes, ma'am. The number of...
I would push on that.
Yes, ma'am. And there are a number of parameters that, as you said, will cause us to be tsunami-ready, and they all make sense, they're all doable. It's a lengthy process, but something as significant as inundation mapping. We basically have inundation maps that run from Malibu to Palos Verdes. Currently, USC is handling the inundation mapping for the harbor area.
Right.
But they keep getting pulled off to deal with other, actually, international issues. So that's a very painstaking and long process. While that's going on, a lot of these things are happening in a parallel fashion. The tsunami task force is meeting, the tsunami plans for tsunami evacuation, et cetera, will actually be annexes of the city's emergency operation master plan. So they have to conform to an overall direction, and they require the input and the development from each of the response and emergency support departments in the city.
Anybody else want to speak?
Dave Mall, Emergency Preparedness for the Port of Los Angeles. That's a significant problem that we currently have, is the inundation mapping for the harbor area. We could give you a general idea of the level and the height of the wave, but we couldn't tell you the exact boundaries of where it goes. You have to look at from the high sea level, looking about, which would be about nine feet up, and that's where about the port's level comes to. So you look at from the high sea level, nine feet up, that's about where all the land is within the Port of Los Angeles. Obviously, the Port of Los Angeles is in the impacted area.
Right.
How far into the community does that go? That's another story. There was a previous map that's out there, there's been a couple of them, they're just general guidelines. So just, but because that exists doesn't mean we're stopping on initiatives.
Yeah, I was going to say, it seems to me you could create an evacuation plan.
And we have been, and there are maps that we've worked on as a whole.
Right. And then if it has to be tweaked when the final inundation map comes, then so be it. But it seems like the majority of the work can be done now.
Correct. And there are other things, other initiatives. Before, I know there were some objections to sirens. Well, sirens are going to go on in the Port of Los Angeles.
Good.
So that is going to occur.
Good.
It's currently in this year's, this upcoming fiscal year's budget, so that will happen.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
There are two significant issues that have actually been dealt with this week in the grant process, and one is emergency preparedness information, which the sirens and the EAS-type systems would come under. It's a very big grant issue. The other one is a regional planning proposal in which the evacuation plans for the region and specifically areas like the harbor or areas that would be susceptible to significant events such as a tsunami. Those issues, money is actually being earmarked through the grant process to move forward, as I said before, aggressively, because we agree that 12 months is much, much too long.
Yes. And I need you to take a lead on that from the city of Los Angeles and push them for that. How about our port police?
Morning, ma'am. Mike Raycheck, Lieutenant with the Port Police. Some of the things we've done since that date are, we have tested the community alert network in the harbor area, and we've worked with the Coast Guard in working on the database for their PIER notification system. That's P-I-E-R, that's the notification system that the Coast Guard uses for the port complex. And so those are two things that we've worked towards with regards to making notification to the harbor area. Also, recently, the ports issued a bulletin to 70,000 residents of the community to help inform the public, because community awareness is a huge part of the evacuation and tsunami awareness. So that was done within the last month. We received an interoperability communications vehicle within the last year, and currently we've been doing some training, and we're looking forward to working with the Coast Guard Fire Department and LAPD in the upcoming months, this spring, and testing that vehicle and working with our partner agencies down in the harbor. In the event of an evacuation, the Coast Guard, the Area Maritime Security Committee is the agencies that's coordinating the evacuation plans for the area. So the public service agencies down in the harbor are working under the subcommittee of the Area Maritime Evacuation Subcommittee of the AMSC. And within the last year and a half, we had evacuation plans in draft form, and they've been revamped since then, and we're currently reformatting them.
When do you think, when do you think we will be able to see a evacuation plan?
In my estimation, and I'm not the Coast Guard, I would say probably this spring, maybe this summer, we should have a draft form of that evacuation plan.
Well, I know, colleagues, we're tight on schedule today, and I think this is critically important. And Councilmember Weiss, I hope that you make, Councilmember Weiss, I just wanted to say, I hope that we can really make this a priority when it comes to public safety. It is going to be going to your committee. We need to stay on top of this, and as soon as we have an evacuation plan that's ready for approval, I really, I think this is an important part of public safety in Los Angeles, not just for San Pedro and Wilmington, but really, we're becoming a tourist destination.
Thanks, Mrs. Hahn.
We have a million cruise ship passengers that leave, that embark and disembark annually. This is important. It is a reality. People kind of laughed at me when we talked about a tsunami plan for Los Angeles, but it is a reality, and I hope, I hope I can count on your support.
Absolutely, Ms. Hahn, and you are to be congratulated, because this has been, you've been so passionate about this for so long, and this is one of these issues where it is, to sort of, to mash metaphors, it's under the radar screen because no one notices this sort of issue, and you have been way ahead of your time and absolutely will do whatever, whatever you need on that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, we're just, we're just receiving and filing this today, but I wanted to use as an opportunity for us to pay attention when this draft evacuation plan comes forward for our review.
Okay, we have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Labonde.
Yeah, I might say this again, I'm popping up a lot this morning, and it's because there are a lot of good things happening here. I'd like to ask you gentlemen this question. I have Venice Beach, you know, and the coast is as important to me. We had a storm in January or December during the holidays, and there was tremendous cooperation between the county and the city. In fact, we build these big berms to keep the waves from going in. We have an evacuation plan for Venice as well. This is as serious to Venice as it is to the harbor, and I'd like to get your considerations right now. What are the potential threats of a tsunami for my district as well as obviously for Janice Hahn's?
Councilman, unfortunately, because of the topography, Venice is very much at risk because of its elevation. The inundation maps show that Venice, like I said, is very much at risk for a water event such as a tsunami. Part of, the evacuation plan probably needs to be upgraded and extended a little more, and also a public education thing. I think by making us tsunami-ready as a community, we'll do a lot to put constituents in Venice much more at ease and much more prepared for a waterborne event.
When we had the potential of flooding in the December storm, community leaders and my council office in cooperation with the police got the message out as to what the route would be going out of there and the route that the emergency vehicles will be coming in. Now, as you continue this report, Janice Hahn and I are joined at the hip with the coast, obviously. Are you looking at Venice as part of the same process you're doing with the harbor?
Absolutely. We're looking, we're looking at the whole city. Any parts of the city will be impacted by a water event such as a tsunami. We're looking at, the, one of the details with, or one of the significant issues with the evacuation plan is that it doesn't stop at a jurisdictional boundary, that the yellow line in the street has to be able to shake hands with the next jurisdiction and the next jurisdiction. So that's why we're looking at the city in totality in terms of evacuation plan.
And you're looking specifically too at the canals in Venice?
Absolutely.
Which are obviously the most sensitive below sea level area?
Absolutely. The areas that are most at risk based on the inundation maps and the topography.
And I'd appreciate it once you've got something, a little bit more clarity for us. We need to get it out to our constituents as soon as possible. She's right, we can't wait a year for this stuff to happen.
Yes, sir.
We need to be prepared to know what evacuation routes we can take, even if you don't have the warning system so closely in place. If we hear a bulletin over the radio saying there's a potential of a tsunami, people want to say, well, I know what route I'm going to do to get away from the beach. And that kind of simple direction doesn't take a year. In fact, what I would like is a piece of paper that tells us what the evacuation route is. I'll do an email blast to all the folks in my district, and the police department in both areas of my district will get the message out as well. Sooner the better on that.
Yes, sir. And Emergency Preparedness Department absolutely is the lead agency on this, and we will ensure that we definitely have something out to the communities much sooner than 12 months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and again, thank you, Janice Hahn, for your leadership on this, and I'm joined at the hip with you on this. Thank you.
And what good have to say?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Miss, madam president and members, I have no questions, but I do want to stand to reinforce the importance of doing this in a timely fashion and to say to you that I'm proud of the way you're handling this issue, and even though I've only been here a short period of time, it's been a pleasure. But what I want to say is that when we look back to what happened in New Orleans and Mississippi, I can remember watching it on television and saying to myself, every level of government failed.
Right.
I don't care what the feds say, what the state says, what the city says, every level of government failed. There are individuals that were involved in that that, in my opinion, will never sleep comfortably again, because people are gone, dead, just relocated, dislocated because of their lack of pre-planning. We can't wait a year. We've got to do this in some kind of phased approach, so that as soon as you get a handle on things, that information can be spread out throughout the entire city. We, I don't want to, when I go, when I wash, brush my teeth at night, I look in the mirror, I say, other than good-looking guy, I know I'm going to go to bed, have a good night's sleep. I want all of us to be able to look in the mirror if there's some disaster and know that, number one, we were prepared, and number two, we did the very best that we could to protect the people of this great city. And I also think, I was glad to hear that I thought I heard that there are discussions with other jurisdictions and other, the county and other cities, because it's important that we do this together, because this problem is not LA's problem, it is the region's problem. So with that, I will take my seat.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Before I acknowledge Mr. Labonde, I just wanted to, before our illustrious president left, that his birthday happens to be tomorrow, so we wanted to, I tricked you to come back. So I just want you all to acknowledge our wonderful birthday of our president of the council.
Thank you all.
I told him I had a very important thing he had. Greg wants to know if he's old enough to drink, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Have a wonderful birthday, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Labonde.
Madam president, Mr. Garcetti, before you leave, now you're eligible to run for president of the United States, so I just wanted to let you, 35 beautiful years, congratulations. Mr. Wesson, great to follow you and what you're concerned about, I will direct a comment to our emergency preparedness now. I mean, it's not a year from now. It hurts. I remember during the 94 earthquake, one of the greatest tales was, is when Richard Reardon pulled on his Laker sweatshirt, drove himself down through Wilshire Division, came down here and said, well, how do we come up from this challenge? And all of a sudden, things started to happen. And you know what? It also pushed the state, because this freeway that got collapsed at La Cienega in your district, you were involved in that. The way they moved to make it fixed afterwards and make it safer, it didn't wait a year. They did it. You know, they didn't wait a year. We have to be prepared now if there's something, because you or your general manager or whomever, the chief of police, the fire chief, would be here the next day if there's an accident this afternoon and there's no plan. So I would encourage you to figure it out, and I would also ask our great port police to look at the issues of the bridges. I went last week down to the port. I know it's tsunami, but I was looking at all those trucks, and I think of all those famous Hollywood movies when they show things happening, whether it's a tsunami or earthquake, and you keep driving over the bridge. There's nothing to stop you if there's something on the bridge, either, and working cooperatively with Long Beach, because they have bridges as well as Los Angeles. But just to alert people, or the siren that you spoke of, and that you are, it spoke of on that, is very important to look at that issue as well to inform people and also pipe right into KNX, KFWB, and all the Spanish-speaking radio stations, Korean-speaking radio station, information, it's so important. Members, you said a year, every second Saturday of May is Fire Service Day, and I know Mr. Rosendahl spoke earlier about, you know, emailing people out... about, you know, emailing people out. We get, you get something by the 14th of May, or whatever the date is, the second Saturday of May, just to, and get with the fire department, and get with the police department, get with the harbor police and port police, and make sure that they get the information out that people know, because it's going to be scary. And I remember another old movie of Ray Milland when it was about LA, and the guys were trying to escape from LA, I think it was a different title. Ray, Ray Milland took, went into a, in your district, Greg, before it was a district long ago, he went into a hardware store, a sporting goods store, asked the guy to, you know, about a firearm, you know, instead of buying it, he held the guy up, got gasoline. How he got on the road to get out of Los Angeles, it's a classic Ray Millan movie, is he threw it in the road to stop the road from everybody else, and he got ahead.
Wow.
You know, and so all this craziness could happen unless we're prepared. I took a minute of your time to talk about all this craziness, but we've got to be prepared, and it's up to your department to be prepared, and it's up to us to help your department to be prepared, and the support of the police and fire and other agencies. I thank you. Thank you for bringing this to the attention. And what Mr. Wesson said was so important about how a disaster changed a life, so we can think of the brothers and sisters in, in the Katrina area and the Gulf Coast, and how their life has changed because loved ones are gone, and how their challenges. We can prevent that by being prepared. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Ms. Hahn, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you. And colleagues, I love it when you really add weight to this discussion. I've been pleading for this for a long time. I love it that you're also saying 12 months is too long. If we learned one lesson from the Indonesian tsunami, it was warning. If you warn people that it's happening, that it's coming, give them a clear way to evacuate, we can save lives, and that's what this is about. And the fact that we actually had a real tsunami warning in June of last year says that it actually could happen here in Los Angeles, and we need to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, that my item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 10 ayes, that item has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Next order, please.
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Madam President, thank you. This is another federal situation here. We're opposing HR Bill 3824, Congressman by the name of Pombo, threatening the Endangered Species Act. Look, the Endangered, the Endangered Species Act was made a law over 30 years ago in 1973. Since then, only nine of the 1,800 species protected by the act have become extinct. With the participation of communities, business, and government, less than 1% of development has been halted, providing that we can preserve wildlife without making huge lifestyle compromises. With the creation of jobs from tourism and outdoor recreation as well as more livable communities, people all throughout California and throughout our country have benefited from this act. The greatest symbol of the act's success is the bald eagle, which was on the brink of extinction when the act was passed. Habitat destruction, trophy hunting, and pesticides have left the country with only a few hundred nesting pairs of bald eagles. Today, there are more than 6,000 nesting pairs in the United States. I want to thank my colleagues Perry and Padilla and Garcetti for standing with me to protect the environment, and I urge the council to support this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And we have two public speaker cards on this item. Andrew Adams, followed by Sylvia Hawkins.
My name is Andrew Adams. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, and it's a pleasure to come before you today to discuss this issue. Defenders Wildlife has half a million members nationwide and over 27,000 members in the LA city, and I wanted to thank the LA City Council for addressing this issue, and in particular, Councilman Rosendahl and his staff for their work on this, Councilwoman Perry and Councilman Padilla for co-sponsoring this, and also Council President Garcetti for seconding it, and Councilman Smith for moving it through committee. But yeah, as Councilman Rosendahl was saying, some of the success stories I'm sure you're familiar with, the bald eagle, the grizzly bear is about to be delisted because of the work of the Endangered Species Act. One example that's more familiar would be the California condor, which, when I was born, there was 22 condors left, and now there's 279. So that's just a really great success story, and it's a symbol of California that has rebounded. And this, this bill that we're discussing now, HR 3824, would strip the Endangered Species Act of the provision that would regulate pesticides, which is the exact provision that saved the bald eagle. In addition, it would be paying landowners to obey the law, which is not something that I think we do in this country. So I want to thank the LA City Council for taking action on this issue, and I urge you to support this resolution in support of the Endangered Species Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Knowing that our financial statements, audit, Simpson and Simpson Businesses Supplies has been overlooked, we cannot continue to overlook government's workers on their houses and their buildings' responsibility. These companies must pay their mortgage and not quit because all trades have stopped it. Subsidized companies are coupons are out for all business owners. I mean, the trade has stopped. There will be no ticket assigned because of treatment of cost to the public people rent. Until the United States of America government get verification of all city funds and city treasures accounts, we must not give credit, loans, or financial grants to Councilman Hosira on his late payments of his house mortgage or card notes or any city council worker.
Ms. Hawkins, this is regarding the Endangered Species Act.
Because he is a government worker, send that California debts are over $2 trillion in the bucket garbage can. Since the public people bills is no credit, therefore no credit ever with this city hall council board. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 10 ayes, that item's been approved. Next item, please.
Item 22 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this motion calls for an ICO for the Los Angeles River. As you know, we have adopted guiding principles through the Ad Hoc River Committee. This allows us to put an ICO for one year with two six-month extensions. All we're trying to do is make sure that any future developments that are right now in the pipeline will be consistent with the guiding principles that we've adopted as a council. On the second page of the motion gives you exact locations where this ICO will be in place. It does not touch the residential zones along the river. It keeps them away, it isolates it from this action, and as you can see, we've already invested several million dollars towards the master plan. That is well on its way. We've had several committee meetings, hundreds of people have been attending these workshops, and again, it's a matter of how we coordinate and make sure we are able to enhance our relationship. I've been saying all along, how we convert our backyard into our front yard. So I appreciate your support, and this will help us along in making sure that we do not lose opportunities in changing the face of the city through this ordinance. I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you. There's no other speakers on this item. Let's prepare the roll. Do we have a card on this? I don't have this. What item is this? Look at this. Melrose Larry Green.
You can't fool me. Well, you know, one thing, I took off my hat, one of the councilmen, I won't say who, said I looked more professional without my cowboy hat, so it's right back there. This is very important, this item 22. You know, planning is fascinating. Planning is fascinating, and the interim control ordinance, ICO, is the acronym. This is leading to history. This is leading to history, and also, you all go down, this LA River can be like the San Antonio River Walk. I hope that Bill Rosendahl will, will someday invite Allo Guthrie to, to his good friend Allo Guthrie to come to Los Angeles and we, sooner rather than later on this LA River stuff. Let's, let's cut the red tape and let's do it really soon because it'll be great. And this is going to really blow your minds, but let's, I'm going to say this word, which is shocking for Republicans. Let's enlist some of the gang members in Los Angeles and get them out of gangs to help clean up the LA River. I said the word "gang members" in Los Angeles, and I'm one of those right-wing nutty Republicans. Thank you very much. And by the way, by the way, in closing, I'm leaving, I'm going to go on a walking tour of downtown LA, and I want to propose the Melrose Larry Green Act right now. For you to introduce, the Melrose Larry Green Act, and what that is, is simply, when you sign up for a card in city council, you must speak about the item for which you signed up. So I've heard people in this council talking about things, "Your time is too valuable. Every minute that's wasted of your time is probably $25,000 lost to the people in the city of LA." So the Melrose Larry Green Act, which I'm hereby proposing, is that if you sign up to speak on an item, you must speak on that item, and if you are not speaking on that item, you lose your right to speak if you've submitted a card. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And we never waste time listening to the people. All right, now there really aren't no other speakers, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Now, what shall we do?
Madam President, that does conclude the items called special. Do you wish to recess this meeting and take up the special meeting?
I do.
I'll call the roll.
[laughter]
Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weesar, Labonge, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Madam President?
Thank you. So we will recess this meeting and open the special one.
And you do have one item before you, and it is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Thank you. And we have Speaker, Councilwoman Grul.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's work on this behalf, and I'm going to get this closer because it doesn't seem to be loud enough there. Can you hear me? Is that loud enough? Colleagues, we have an item before us today that went through Plum Committee that has been one of the most challenging, and if I could, I see staff standing over there. So if I could have Planning and City Attorney just come up to the table for a couple quick questions potentially. Many of you have been familiar with a project called Chase Knowles, which is a beautiful garden-style apartment that was designated in 2000, I think 2000, 2000, maybe even 2001, as historically significant. And the challenge has been that the owner of the property would like to be able to build additional units on the site under the Mills Act, and has an agreement with the City of Los Angeles on the Mills Act. Now, the challenge has been to make sure that any of the new units that are being developed are consistent with the existing buildings on that site. Now, I've had a couple of, of community meetings, well, several community meetings, but one large meeting where we probably had 150 people who wanted me to be able to say, "No development would occur on this property," as many of us experienced. That is not an option that I have before me today, or even at that day, to just say no to any project on that site. And I know both the City Attorney and the Planning Department can respond to that as well. So what I have tried to do, and you've heard this often from me, is try to figure out something that preserved the, the community's needs within the law that we have. And so we have been negotiating prior to this past Tuesday in Plum, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weiss and Mr. Weesar, who spent many hours in the chambers there, debating this issue and trying to figure out what we could do. Since then, the Planning Department, the community, I think, was over seven hours in my office yesterday with my staff and the developer, have been negotiating back and forth. And we all hear the old adage of how you make sausage. It's not a very pleasant thing, and some people don't like it even when you have that sausage as it comes out. Well, that's what we have here today before us. And we would have liked to, I think, both from the community side and the developer side, have had even more time to work out some of the details. But because of some of the legal restrictions, we are here today, and the City Attorney knows, and I know, we have people from the Conservancy and even from the developer side who have challenged the City Attorney. I just want to ask real quickly this question, which is, we can't separate the track map from the EIR today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If you could just kind of elaborate real briefly.
Well, the, the project analyzed under the EIR is this, is this project, that's what the, the map is for, and they're, they're in front of the council today on appeal in 2:45, and it's, it's just a package deal. They're analyzing the same, the same project.
And if we, if we did not act today on the 2:45 and the track map, it would go back to the advisory agency's recommendations?
The, the decision of the advisory agency would stand.
Would stand, which is not something either myself or the community wants. The developer would like that, but we are not in favor of that item. Colleagues, you will, hopefully, it either is being distributed or has been distributed, it will be distributed momentarily, the amending motion that we have before us. Again, we talked a lot about whether or not we could say no to this project and what would potentially happen. And worst-case scenario is we'd be standing here, as Mr. Rosendahl has had to stand here with the Lincoln Place Apartments issue, and some of the options that have been put out there to build on that location. I'm never afraid to, you know, take a risk, but in this instance, I think what we have come up with today, and again, a special thank you to, and I'm going to name them in a minute, to the community who has worked very diligently, and I know is probably not 100% happy, but with their input, what we are proposing today is that we are going to expand some of the existing courtyards to, excuse me, to the courtyards they're proposing to make them more like those in the historic part of Chase Knowles. We added new courtyards to improve the spatial relationships between the new and old buildings. We adjusted the height of the buildings in several areas to better match the height of the adjacent buildings. We required the developer to withdraw a pending subdivision map, which could have been the beginning potentially of another Lincoln Place. This was, they were suggesting 498 new condos that would be put on this site. And we required a comprehensive landscape and irrigation plan for the property. And so we were able to get agreement on this items, and again, this is not an easy thing in which we have had to do, and the time period is, has been limited, but we are able to ensure that the advisory agency or the director and our office will review final plans. The Cultural Heritage Commission has another review process that will occur when we, when they come for their demolition permit and building permits, and we want to make sure, Mr. Reyes was advising me today, to make sure that we know every single step in which the city can continue to ensure that it is consistent with the standards. One of the issues before us, and I know I'm a little bit over, but this has been a long time, and I, I know I have a few more minutes before we lose quorum, so that's why I want to go farther on this, is the fact that there is an item in the EIR, and I want to make this statement that the City Attorney has provided to me. Page 39 of the EIR concerns me inasmuch as the language implies that the city of Los Angeles has no jurisdiction over the historic designation and its consistency with the Mills Act, because both the state historic preservation and the federal government gave approval for their original design that the developer submitted. And in the EIR, the developer suggested that, in fact, we had no authority to challenge that approval. And what we were able to identify is, in fact, we do have that option to make changes, and that's why we have been scrambling in the last few weeks to actually put together some of these concepts. So the statement is not appropriately a part of the EIR analysis under CEQA and has no legal significance. The discretion and jurisdiction of the Cultural Heritage Commission is governed by city codes. Is that?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. So we want that to be part of this. I just want to thank a few people, and then I know, I think Mr. Reyes may be saying a few words, is the appellant, Susan Jagiello, Nick Otway, Barry Colerson, Steve Schwartz, Rick Mayer from the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and Ken Bernstein of the Los Angeles Conservancy. Conservancy. Again, all of you know that I stand up to people who would challenge our authority, individuals who would threaten lawsuits, all of those things, and we did that on Tuesday to say, we are prepared, if you are unwilling to negotiate, to actually move forward on that denial, and felt comfortable with that. But what we have here today is something that we believe can assure the consistency and get us as close as we can in making sure that we preserve not only the existing Chase Knowles, but the surrounding neighborhood and community. And if I could say no and have no other development there and preserve it exactly as it is today, I would stand here and say that. I do not have that option before me. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and congratulate Councilmember Gruel and her staff, the departments, Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office, and working together on this very difficult case. I just want to make sure that we are consistent in allowing for our discretion in defining these standards, so I appreciate the language the City Attorney is introducing, because I don't want to lose that flexibility and that discretion. It's important to all of us. It's one of the few hooks, if you will, that we might have in dealing with issues of this complexity, but what I did not see here, Councilmember Gruel, and I just want to, I don't want to make things more difficult, but affordability factor and affordable units, all that remains constant, or will that change in the future as well? That wasn't clear to me.
I think in the affordability for the existing, the existing units that are a hundred and how many units?
Two-hundred-and-forty, I believe.
Existing, two-sixty, two-sixty are currently under rent control. So the existing two-hundred-and-sixty are currently under rent control.
Great, so as long as we know we're obliging those types of conditions, and we're not penalizing those who are dependent on that type of housing, I just want to make sure that was there for the record as well. So with that, I encourage that we support the amendment to the Plum report. I want to thank my colleagues, Jose Weesar and Councilmember Weiss. I think we finished around six o'clock that day, and just appreciate all your hard work, so urge an aye vote.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, colleagues, this item is before us as amended by Ms. Gruel.
Yes, I think I looked to the city clerk that that would be the amendment that I put forward.
We do have the written amendment that was circulated, as well as the verbiage that you will.
And we did have, again, if I could just ask the members of the community that are here as well to stand up, because they, all of you, and the appellant and so forth, that worked very, very hard, and our work is not over, just so you, I know you know that, but thank them for being here today. They knew we were the potential of losing a quorum, and so they did not submit additional cards. We have been working with them nonstop for the last twenty-four, thirty-six hours to be able to put this together, and the developer has been working hard on that as well, so just would ask for, and I vote on the amendment.
And before we vote, we do have one more member that wishes to speak, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just want to ask my colleague and maybe the city staff, is there any opportunity with the way the tenants are being allowed to live in this project and continue to grow, but my tenants are being thrown out, and I've been screaming about it since I got elected to the city council, and every day more get thrown out. Is there any applicability or best practices? Is there something we can do to save the eighty-three remaining tenants in Lincoln Place that we can learn from this experience or not? Could someone respond?
Michael Grant, Deputy Advisor Agency, City of L.A. Planning Department. Since they're two different applications, we review them separately, obviously. Things learned from this application, this was also an application from the first date to preserve the existing rent control units, so there are separate issues that the city was evaluating in both cases. So as terms of learning things, one of the issues is what's proposed by the private development community to the city is what we evaluate, so it's not, since it's not a city project, we're not able to really look at some of the issues I think you'd like to address on Lincoln Place, but being that this is a standalone project coming in under its own application, it had these types of concessions already built in from what the applicant had proposed to do.
Fair enough. Is there anything I can do between now and March twentieth, based on what you're doing here on this one, to save the eighty-three tenants that are presently still at Lincoln Place?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not the staff on the Lincoln Place case, but I'll let our colleagues know who are working with your office on that case, the outcome of this case, and see if there's any lessons that we learned that we could help your office in that mandate.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sorry, Ms. Hahn, I have one other.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is Councilwoman Gruel.
Sorry. Just to address, you know, one of the things that we talked about in the last thirty-six hours was, what if we said no, the developer sold the property, you know, opted out of the Mills Act, which could be, and again, this is where we disagreed a little bit with the developer's representatives, which was, you know, they said in a year we would sue and have breach of contract, is what they were suggesting, or could just wait out the Mills Act, which would be ten years, and then interim they could use the Ellis Act to evict the tenants that are there. That was one of the overriding, you know, again, trying to find that balance, and is that accurate? I want to make sure. Sometimes a little knowledge is too much on my part, so.
Very accurate.
Okay, and so that was, again, trying to figure that out, and having the City Attorney and Planning Department saying, here's what potentially could happen, here's what you can do now, and sometimes, nothing against anyone, but the devil you know today is better than the devil you don't know tomorrow, and so what is it that we can guarantee today? And that's why we're sitting here trying to do something that is, like I said, a little bit of sausage, trying to put it together, and making sure that we're going to have at every step of the way a process which guarantees that consistency with the historic designation at all levels, so just so you know, we're going to continue to be watching. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Thank you, colleagues, for giving me some extra time there.
Thank you. Okay, this item is really before us now, as amended. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now, what's before us?
Madam President, do you wish to now adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
Yes. Let's adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting.
Council has motions for posting a referral?
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at twelve fifteen on Tuesday, February seventh, to leave at eleven fifteen on Tuesday, February fourteenth, and Wednesday, March first, all for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Tuesday, February twenty-first for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Padilla moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Wednesday, March twenty-ninth for city business. That meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, March third, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Padilla moves. Ms. Hahn seconds.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at eleven a.m. on Wednesday, February fifteenth, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
And Councilmember Weesar requests to be excused on Wednesday, February eighth, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Colleagues, any announcements today? If, yes, Mr. Labange.
I just would like to make a brief announcement on the weekend coming forward. Lot of activity around Los Angeles. Encourage people to get out and enjoy this great city of Los Angeles, and it's going to be a beautiful weekend, and visit the Los Angeles Zoo as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
I would just like to announce that tomorrow is the inaugural meeting of the L.A. Neighborhood Council Congress. Over thirty neighborhood councils have joined this Congress, and their purpose is to get together and discuss and share ideas on citywide issues. This is a way that they can be united and have a more powerful voice in the process of government. So tomorrow will be their inaugural meeting. I think some of you are going to be there. I'm also going to be there. It's at the DWP Building on Hope Street at ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Mr. Labange and Mr. Padilla.
Let me just correct that. That's the John Farrar Office Building at the Department of Water and Power. It's called the John Farrar. I'll just correct that for John. And also, I'd want to say, what I wanted to say is that yesterday was the last day in the history of this country that a telegram was issued. I read that in the paper this morning, and I thought it just changed of technology. It replaced the Pony Express. Mr. Zine, how long did the Pony Express run? How many? Sixty-seven, sixty-seven days. Sixty-seven days. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
And here I thought Mr. Labange was going to remind us, this is a sad anniversary of a plane crash that took the lives of the Big Bopper and Buddy Holly, and Pacoima's very own Richie Valens, so we will keep them in our, in their legacies in our minds and in our prayers. But colleagues, on Sunday, before the Super Bowl, for folks who live in North Hills and the surrounding communities of the Northeast Valley, there is the Our Lady of Peace Church Fifth Annual Health Fair that's scheduled from eight-thirty to three-thirty at one-five-four-four-four Nordoff Street. It is open for everybody. Come seek health advice and services. Our Lady of Peace, Fifth Annual Health Fair.
I just wanted to remind everyone to visit Chinatown for the New Year's festivities. Come and visit our restaurants, our shops, use the Go Line if you don't want to hassle the parking, and we invite you all, it's a great place to be in the next month for all the festivities. Gang hai fat choy.
Thank you very much, and another wonderful parade tomorrow, so. Colleagues, we have lost a quorum, so the City Attorney has advised we will not be able to do adjourning motions today. We will do those on Tuesday. Thank you. We are adjourned.